Would you give us a roll call please?
District one, Mr. Duffy.
Present.
District two, Mr. Bitterball.
Present.
And district three, Mrs. Gilbert.
Present.
District four, Mr. Seuss.
Present.
Chairman also present.
Thank you, Mr. Man. At this time, would you all stand for any indication? Ladies and gentlemen, ready for your committees?
That's right. My gracious heavens, Father Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow on us, Lord, we thank you for this beautiful county we live in. Lord, we just pray as our leaders entering this meeting tonight, Lord, I just pray that you give them discernment, or that you just give them grace, or that you just watch over all those that are in need around us, or pray for those that are in harm's way today, and Lord, we just pray that you help us to be mindful and would watch over us, guide us and direct us, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Do you want to, Miss Gilbert, some ladies, please, for ladies?
I pray for ladies.
To the land of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item we have is approval of the agenda for today's work session. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I have a question.
We have a second, see any discussion concerning this? Okay, no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. First item for discussion has to do with the county administrator's contract. This was brought my attention Thursday by the HR director. The administrator had a new contract, and one of the things that was left off of it was annual aid. It was on the other contract differences that we worked left off. So, I think we can, any discussion concerning this? I think this is something we can correct, and I move to just to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, the next thing that we have is bus passes for homes.
Yes, I had that put on there, Coach. I was receiving phone calls, we had discussed it a few months ago, they're wanting them for the cost of buses or canceling any buses. Does anyone know where we stand with that, something Matthew was working on, talking with the city of Scottsboro?
How many do they live there?
No, I don't think, see, Matthew was being the in-between there, so...
Last time I talked with Carmen, she told me the home, but we never got that by, we ain't got home.
And I knew we were going to discuss with Scottsboro.
I'll talk with Larry Anderson and Miss Carmen this coming week, and maybe by the next work session that we can have that hammered out, what kind of numbers they are. In fact, if six everybody, we'll just go with this on the next work session. Next thing that we have on the agenda is an EMA director position. I talked with HR director, this was Thursday, and I think in the past, we were on how Mr. Jackson was going to serve as EMA director for ninety days, and then during this time, we'll go and accept applications. Well, in talking with the HR director, the current job description is out of date, it goes back to August nineteen ninety, and there have been some new things that's been added from the state perspective that would, if we don't put them into play in the job description, could cost us some money. And as Mr. Jackson knows, some of these certifications you have to have, it can cost a county like twelve thousand dollars a year, and this does not stay solely in the job description that you have to have that. So, I plan to do the homework on it and have it up to date, the job description by the next meeting.
What was the last time it was updated?
Nineteen ninety. In July fourteen of sixteen, I gave some job requirements that needed to be done that never was actually approved by the commission to make a new job description. So, there's no objection, I'll place it on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, the next thing is commission meeting time change.
I had that put on there also. Guys, I'd like to ask if you knew the Bible part, anybody that has any objections about?
Let's do a movement to thirty.
I'll stick.
I said, what's with you?
I don't have a problem.
Does anyone have a problem with that? I promise we'll get you as fast as possible to answer. It's just killing me. I'm getting off the bus at ten minutes and five minutes to four.
There's no objection, I'll place it on the agenda for the next meeting. This is all that we have for the comments from the commission at this time. We'll ask for reports from the staff with the county administrator, do you have anything today?
Nothing today, sir.
Our engineers not with us today, and the attorney's out of town. Mr. Harmon, do you have anything from the sheriff's office?
Just want to let you know that we took delivery of the animal control truck this week, it's being striped and fuel lights put on it for the next few days, and we've been passing down this truck to make it.
Mr. Harmon, do you have anything?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson, do you have anything with EMA?
No, sorry.
Okay, the next thing that we have is announcements, will be a presentation from BioSolids with a coordinator from the city of Chattanooga presentation. We turn it over to you, Ms. Karen Stott.
I think you direct to Jim Rose.
Okay.
We're going to set up the... I'll just here. That's basically colonies that could be, and that's per hundred milliliters, so it's a sample, you know, small sample bottles, I like that. That's how many colonies can be in that sample. Our maximum monthly average is a hundred and twenty-six, and these are limits the state puts on us to make sure the river is swimmable and fishable. So, in this pond, from these ponds that were tested, those were the numbers, and you can see they're well below our limits. And the limits you find in ponds, or the levels of E. coli you find in a pond can vary drastically depending on what might be standing around the pond, you know, cows standing in, it's going to drive it out the roof. So, these are, this was after some application of our BioSolids, and these, this is what was tested in these ponds near where we had applied BioSolids. So, again, some regulatory agencies we answer to, whole list of folks, and we meet all the requirements regarding BioSolid. That's just a picture of, you know, bottom line is, where BioSolids get put, you can grow grass better, that's just normally the way it works. And that's why it's done all over the world, all over the country, all over the world. And here's some contact information, Karen, this is Karen here, and that's her phone number and email address. Effective November first, we're going to be utilizing our 311 call center, which that's the number for that, and we'll spread that around to whoever needs it. The reason for that is, they do a really good job of recording phone calls and recording whatever the problem is, and make sure it's tracked, it gets into our system really well. So, we want to make sure that we don't miss any kind of complaints come with BioSolids program, and want to be able to answer them as quickly as possible. So, that's why we want to use our call center to do that. That's all we have, do you have any questions?
How many tons of BioSolid product comes out of your pond?
Every year, we produce seventy thousand tons.
Seventy thousand?
Seventy thousand tons of dry material, which is, yeah, that's the number.
Same, that's wet.
Seventy thousand wet tons, which is, it varies back. Yeah.
It's probably, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars. Do you hold water at the facility, or do you go out immediately when it comes out of land, do you go out immediately?
It goes out as soon as we test it to verify that it meets the land application standards. We hold very little of, if it's raining sometimes we have to hold, it cannot be spread.
About how many acres of land can you spread that, so it can be spread?
I'll have to ask Karen about that.
And how many are something you have to check on?
These guys, this is Denali, this is our contractor.
Based on the crop, it will vary because every crop will go through Auburn to get a grain. So, in Alabama, Tennessee, we use UTK. But with Auburn, so corn, they give a rate of corn, which sort of means it's a different grade, but...
It's a half a hundred grades of...
Will be, so the more corn, the less land would be the easiest way to add to it. But I maintain about fifteen thousand acres, that's within two states and...
Seven counties.
Seven counties, and we try almost like having eighteen month rotation, so we're not, you know, we're not in your place every November, we're eighteen months to be spread out. So, we have a lot more land than we do.
You've got exclusive handwork, that product, and you're telling us no weather?
We did that out there, I don't know, five years or something like that, sir.
Is this granulated real with fertilizer?
No, it would be a, it's thirty-three percent solid consistency of course, you hear?
Be more of like a liquid slurry?
No.
No, it's pretty solid, it's stacked up, we load it, thirty-three percent solid sounds very wet, but it's pretty dry.
Yeah, twenty percent is about like if you squeeze it like some mud, and it would stick together, that's about twenty percent.
You know, all the hosts walk under the pile, I mean, little sunlight, you could walk over the pile.
So, it's spread like spreading lime?
We spread it with manure spreader. It's a Knite brand, you know, made of cocoon manure spreader. So, it's, instead of fans, it's more of the manure type spreader, litter.
Reason I was asking, I hauled some, it's been several years ago, down in the Coleman County, it came out of Florida, it was granulated, like real like fertilizer, it had all the specs that came with, you know, EPA approved and other things there, we pulled out, you had all these little lakes, but we, our farm, that's why I was asking you to know that one.
Do we have any questions from the audience before we go to, for the people that put on the presentation, before we go to the people like the speaker?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Is E. coli the only thing that you test for, whenever you test the water for Flat Rock?
Those particular samples, I think, is that all we test for Flat Rock?
Yeah. So, why would you all just test for E. coli when there's so many more different things that can be in there? I used to take my kids to Flat Rock Creek to swim, and I won't anymore. And the reason I won't is because there is no life form in that creek anymore. You have a creek, there should be all kinds of life form in there, there's nothing, nothing in there.
Yeah, what I could tell you is, what we do, we have setbacks off of waterways, creeks, and ponds, that we have to meet according to standards, and we meet those, and when we send out our BioSolids, what we know is that they meet standards that are set, you know, for EPA sets.
For the EPA, so how many times did the EPA actually came this year to your plant and tested? How many times have they actually visited these ponds in Flat Rock or the creek and tested? The EPA, not your company, the EPA.
I don't know if EPA has been, the state, EPA would not normally come because the state of Tennessee has privacy, you know, over the rules, so the state of Tennessee directly enforces the rules for us. The state of Tennessee audits our program fairly regularly, I'm not sure how often, how they have it come. The complaint about these particular samples came to us through A.D.M., so, I mean, that, because it's in Alabama, and then the state of Tennessee regularly audits our program, and actually, that's where we got the award like for our pre-treatment program, because the state of Tennessee recommends that kind of thing when they see a program that's run well. So, we, you know, what we do is we have to verify that it meets the standards. So, there was a complaint...
So, basically, EPA has not been out and checked anything themselves, it's just been y'all's company that has checked?
Alabama tested that.
Alabama EPA, what was that box, and how long ago was that?
It's been this year, more than once this year they've been out. We had a high E. coli finding that went on, which is, wow, we went back and did E. coli sampling on all those that were listed.
So, since it was high, will the EPA come back out then and check it again, instead of this company checking it?
No, I wouldn't think so, no.
Why not, if it's high? I mean, this is our community that we're talking about, this is our water, our kids.
Well, here's the thing, when you look at E. coli, you can look at it one day, and it'll be one thing, and if a flock of bees flies over and happens to, you know, release something in the pond, it's going to be out the roofs the next day. So, anytime there's wildlife around, that's what you see, and, I mean, that's what we see, and it comes, E. coli, fecal, it comes from mammals, any type of mammals, and what we know is, when we meet the EPA regs and TDEC rules, they say that protects the community, protects the waterways from that kind of contamination. That's what, that's what we know, that's what we go by, and any kind of high, you can get, most ponds around various times are going to have a high E. coli content, just depending on the animals around, it's just the way it is.
There's no way in this Flat Rock Creek...
If we would, let's, anybody else have this limited point, please, go ahead.
Flat Rock Creek, when it was running, home would be that high, and stump like a skunk.
Yeah, I saw some of those pictures.
It went straight to the river, and our water filter plants is in the river. We got to drink it, I buy a bottle of water and jug water, it cost me out to Yaya.
Exactly.
I'm tired of it.
Me too.
Anybody else want a question? We got about six people lined up to talk, so if there was any point question, go ahead.
My question is this, now, let me explain to you first, I'm not sharp to draw and patch here, but, and I know a lot of people's got college degrees, and a private policy, and everything else, but sometimes a little bit of common sense will carry you further than book sense. And all this, all this place, it owes the almighty dollar, that's what it is, nobody knows that for a minute. Nobody cares, it's all over the nothing.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I got my phone.
Okay, okay, well, go ahead.
Mr. Ashburn, may I just ask one question?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Please, have you tested the, in Flat Rock Creek, Jones Creek, also Bryant Creek, has heavy metals been tested in those locations?
I don't, we would not have tested for heavy metals in those locations. We test for metals in our product that goes out, and that's a slide we showed that, you know, that shows our average, and we do that on a regular basis, and if there's no heavy metals in that product, there's not going to be any heavy metals in that creek that came from our product, that's what we're saying. You know, we provide a product that we believe meets all, it does meet all the regulations that we have to meet, and we believe it's a beneficial use for the community, and I don't, you know, I can't answer about the water in a certain creek, and, but I can tell you, what we do is test for the metals in that material, and it is well below EPA and state guidelines, so...
You realize, just to follow up on Maser, you do realize that those heavy metals, or they build up within the biosphere. I mean, it's just not like, although your shipment that you put on that land, coming out, that direct applicant, application, may have an acceptable level, but that acceptable level builds up over time.
It only builds up if you apply repeatedly, and what we do, we have a third party that tracks our material, it's called Material Matters, and they make sure we, what limits us is pH, metals aren't even anywhere close to limiting as far as the application rates, and we apply to a place, what'd you say, every eighteen months at most?
Well, I mean, it could be...
Or more often, possibly, but what we're limited by normally is pH of lime, metals don't come anywhere close to be limiting, I mean, we're talking hundred years, two or three hundred years is what the EPA regs say, if you stay on there with their levels of application, then, you know, there's just not going to be a problem with metals as long as you're within their regs.
Okay, if we would, let's move on to the public comments, the people that have signed the sheet, here signing sheet, first we have Sharon Thomas.
Do you want to get up there?
Hey, it's up to you, ma'am. You might want to stand.
I got it now, so y'all may have to bring it with you.
We've got about six people here.
Okay, but I'm with this group because they asked me about, almost a year ago, we had the same problem in my community, Vegas, it's still in the Flat Rock area. The sewage, we call it sludge sewage, came from the same treatment plant in Chattanooga. They didn't spread it, they put it in a landfill, just in a strip mine, and we've still got that. This was an article, I've still got the articles, if anybody wants to read them, and how much money the city of Chattanooga was going to make at our expense. We contacted A.D.M., we contacted the EPA, we contacted everybody from Washington down, when it was, it was CVA of course, and they backed off. We've still got that in our community, a lot of us, they went ahead, I think, and pushed for public water, and half the people out there came forward there, sixty percent of those wells were contaminated within six weeks, and Flat Rock Creek goes into Hold Creek, goes into Dry Creek, goes into Mundial Ranch, into Coon Creek Gulf, and into the Tennessee River. And now, the magazines that I get do not eat the fish because of the concentration of mercury. And just like Mr. Morgan said, over time, this fills up in the muscles of these fish that people are going to eat or whatever, but I think it's a bad thing, and I know that, you know, there's two different sides to this, their side and our side, but we're going to try to get it stopped. We have a right and privilege to get petitions signed, to get ten percent of the voters to put this on the voting list, because I know, I've lived out there all my life and lived with this crap, and you don't, you just have no idea of how it makes you feel, the people of Scottsboro have no clue of what folks out in the country have to put up with, and it's just like, the city of Chattanooga put us, you know, we're making a profit at their expense, and I don't appreciate that, and I don't thank any of these other people that live out in the country, we like country life, but the city people need to understand what we're going through, and we don't want it. And we're still trying, two thousand and eight, I still have the paper article out of the Huntsville Times, they were worried, A.D.M. was worried about the high content of E. coli and mercury levels that were still in what they dumped from the city of Chattanooga's Marcus and Ben Sewage Treatment Plant. So, that's why I'm saying it's going to be a long process either way, but I'm not for it, I don't think it's a good idea, because I know what we've gone through, and this is one of the highest concentrations of cancer in the United States, the sand mound where I live. And you've got so many things that play a part, and talk about the pH in the water. I know the strip mine, that, they tried to get the pH level up, they never could get it above two point five or seven point five, and it's just a bad situation the way I look at it. But you take all that stuff out of the sewage treatment plant, I think BioSolid to me is just a coded name for sewage and sludge.
It is.
Because I went to that facility and walked through and saw how they did, what they did to make it better and all this, they dumped fifty-four loads of that in this pit and never covered it, there were so many flies, green flies, you couldn't open your mouth, you couldn't breathe, and that's what these people are talking about, they're seeing the green flies, they're seeing, and you get, and let me ask, this is getting kind of off track, but talk about diseases, I've read a lot on diseases that stay in the ground or stay in people that die with the plague, goes back to the Indians, you dig those bones up there, that disease is still there. And you've got Hep C, you've got HIV, you've got all these diseases that are coming from Berlanga Hospital, all these other hospitals that go into that facility. How do you know that you kill that disease? Because in my A.D.M. regulation school, pathogens and things like that, if it gets airborne, you can catch it. And that's some of the concerns of me and living, you know, like I said, where they live is, as the crow flies, is like four miles, and I do know the creeks and the rivers and how it runs, and it goes into the Tennessee River. And like I said, Scottsboro, the people that live here, they don't have a clue.
I can answer that if you want. How we know about diseases and that kind of thing, we don't measure for those diseases, obviously, there's just so many things you would have to measure for, but what we do is, in the solids before they leave the plant, we measure for fecal coliform, we take samples on a regular basis, and the fecal coliform count that we get on a regular basis is less than a thousand colonies per, you know, per sample. Now, what that, what that means is, it sounds like a lot, but the reality is, the limit is two million colonies. So, we're so far below, and what we measure the fecal for, and what EPA says, you measure this as an indicator organism. If you show that fecal itself is not necessarily a problem, it doesn't even necessarily cause disease, but if you reduce that significantly, what the EPA guidelines, and you can read it right in there from their studies, that indicates that you're getting a good kill on everything else generally that's in there, and that's what we have to go on, and that's how we, that's how we say, you know, we're doing the best we can with what we have, and it meets the standard. We're meeting a standard actually for Class A BioSolids, we're called Class B, we're meeting the Class A standard for pathogen reduction, which is just a reduction of things that cause diseases, so...
Well, let me ask you this, back in ninety-five, we had a...
Let's pertain to now, we need to hurry.
Well, I'm going to get to that, because I have their report, and I needed him to look at it and tell me, the E. coli that was checked in April twenty-eighth of two thousand and seventeen, and if you would look at this for me and give me an idea of what you're talking about, or kind of...
Yeah, we could do that after.
As I say, decipher this and let me know what it means, because the number is very high.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
The next one we have on the list, Dean Smart.
Well, it's just like I said before, I'm not sharp to draw and patch, not fine to plate, but with this stuff right here, like I said, I think it's all over the dollar, I think it's what it is, but, like, I've got about thirty-five thousand dollars in ground coal. We couldn't even lay down around the pool that time, all right? You've got to put a gas mask on to lay out there, people go by, they think you're smart. I mean, you cannot enjoy your own property, I've been there thirty years, this is the first time, and flies, gnats, you people in the city ain't seen nothing, believe me. I'm not derailing nobody in the city, but like this lady here said, out in the country, I mean, you buy a place to enjoy when you retire, and you can't even enjoy your own place for the smell, when you go out there of a lones, you want to smell the roses, well, it ain't roses you smell, and I'm telling you, see that? And it smells like you've been outside a toilet all night long, and if the smell is so unbearable, you can smell it, like I said, I live in Rosewood, we meet at the community center, you can smell this stuff three miles away, that's how strong it is. And flies, like I said, you people in the city ain't seen nothing. I mean, I tell you what, let's do it, if you think I'm wrong, take... I mean, I tell you what, let's do, if you think I'm wrong, take a load of this and dump in your front yard and see what strikes. It is so nasty. Think about the people that is on oxygen, that can't sit outside because of the smell. Think about that, what about was y'all? What if y'all were on oxygen? You got the habit to breathe, you got to sit out on your front porch, but you can't do it because of the smell. Now, and then, like I said, this, all this is over, is the dollar, that's all it is, it's over the almighty dollar, people trying to save money, and they know they're trying to save money, but have a little bit of respect in the meanwhile. There is none.
Just for information, I'm the only one that lives in the city.
I grew up in the county, but I do currently live in the city, but the rest of these people live in the county.
I grew up where you live, you don't want it in your front door.
No, I don't.
Okay, the next person that we have that signed up, I believe, is Gerald Pike?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Ma'am, could I ask you some questions?
Sure.
Okay, you know, me and you wrote a rap, remember that? What happened to that sample that I gave you? And you told, excuse me, you told me, said, that is our, that is our problem, but then we got the report back, and you told, it's chicken liver, so how do we know that the other balances is not being changed or something? Now, tell me, you explain that to me.
My first reaction was by the smell.
And you said, look at, you said, that is.
I said, that looks exactly like ours, didn't it? But then when I took it to the lab, I told you I was mistaken, that it was chicken liver, and that was my honest mistake, and I did tell you that I was mistaken, that I honestly thought it was our material until it got to the lab and it was tested and it wasn't it, and I apologize for that, that it was my mistake.
Now, another question is, you told me that in Tennessee, they had a regulation about spreading it certain, close to the house residence.
Yes.
Or waterways, but you said supposed to do the same thing in the state of Alabama, but it's not been done.
Alabama's regulations are very lax compared to Tennessee.
I know, I remember you telling me that, you said, we supposed, Denali, supposed to do the same thing they did in Tennessee.
They have to abide by the.
But they have not done it.
In your area, they have not done it?
Flat Rock Church asked me.
Well, can we talk to you after this also, so the other people can go, or do you want to, it's up to you?
It is, from my opinion, it's about our whole community and the communities around us, and our children that are sick, our elderly that are sick, the people that are dying in our communities, that it attributes to it.
Okay, is that all this?
Okay, one more, one other thing I want to say this, I don't know, below our house, it was in, dumped in coal mines, I don't know, hundreds of loads dumped, I went by there one morning and I looked out, there was dogs and cowards out licking them, you know what that is? There's blood, they was licking them.